Where's my gavel?
We don't give it to you.
How am I going to get the gavel?
There's only certain times we let you have the gavel.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to start. You take your seats, please. Thank you. We'll have Gary do it tonight.
What am I doing?
You're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I meant all of you.
Do you think you can handle it?
Hold on, let me play that.
Jake's in concentration now.
No, I'm not, man.
Oh, yeah. You might need to read some of those motions, too. All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Select Board meeting, October 11th, 2022. We will begin, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask the Vice Chair to please lead us.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. All right, so a quick update, review of today, tonight's agenda. We're going to begin with, we're going to take one, item 2E, out of order, Parks and Rec, Creation of an Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee, and we are going to also take out of order, following that, confirmation of Barbara Tierney as a treasurer-collector. Following that, we will have town clerk, town, excuse me, town clerk updates, approval of warrants for the election, approval of evacuation plan for the election, and Veterans' Group request to hang cards on the trees of the common, Water Department discussion of acceptance of a $200,000 gift on behalf of the commissioners, request to establish, oh, we did that one, sorry, Cemetery Commission request to hire an assistant cemetery superintendent, acceptance of donations, and recognition of Officer John Janakos. Public input, 2E first, I believe. Oh, 2H first?
Just because.
Okay. Well, we're going to, we're going to do this in a completely different order. Update on the Nogob Orchard, review of our Select Board goals from 2023, discussion about the Personnel Advisory Committee size, review a draft letter to the Mass Attorney General, our Town Administrator's performance goals, approval of Douglas Streets, public way. We're going to finalize recommendations for the warrant and assign, assignments for the articles for the Select Board, and then we will have a discussion of ARPA funds for the sewer project, an update on the budget calendar in minutes. So, I believe we're going to start with item 2H, recognition, recognition of detective. I can't speak tonight. Why don't someone else, please come up to the podium and lead us off?
The podium, right over there?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind, so the folks at home can hear and see you.
Thank you, sir. Board members, or Chairman, Board members, thank you for having us tonight. I appreciate the few moments that we're here to recognize Detective John Janakas, who's proudly served the town of Littleton for 25 years, as well as other communities for well over 32 years. I think it goes without saying that John has served this community above and beyond the call of duty in his time here. I've had the pleasure of working with John for 20 years. In that time, I've seen John start the motor unit here at the Littleton Police Department. He served as patrol sergeant, as well as detective and school resource officer, and basically ended his career that way. I think, I'll let him speak a little bit, I'd like him to just highlight some things for himself and for all of us here in the room. I think he's earned that and deserves that. But I really appreciate the time here for the town to recognize John Janakas and his service to the town, so.
Thank you. Hi, John.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm going to read from my, my notes, because I've gone over this 100 times, and it's kind of a strange moment to be here after, after these many years and saying kind of goodbye, so if you, just bear with me. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all for being here. It's been quite a ride over the last 30 years, especially the last two, as we know, it's been kind of crazy with COVID and everything. I'm so grateful for being part of this community. I've gotten to know so many great residents and business owners over the last 25 years, become part of a family, almost, and that's what makes it so difficult for me to be doing this. Even though I'm looking forward to spending more time with my wife and family, I feel like I'm leaving my second home and my other family. I will truly miss all my coworkers and friends in the community. I want to thank the Select Board and all the town officials for all that you do and the support you give. I would like to also thank Chief Pennard, my friend, for always being there and doing the best for the community and for his police department. I would also like to thank the deputy and all my brothers and sisters of the Littleton Police Department for the outstanding job that they do. You know, over the last 30 years, I've had, I've been working in law enforcement, I've had the opportunity to work with different agencies, departments, and I want to say that this community should be proud to have one of the best police departments in the state. Please support them, they won't let you down. Thank you, God bless you all.
Would you open proclamation, you were going to read? The Littleton Select Board recognizes John Janakas in recognition of your 25 years, years of service, October 6th, 1997 to October 14th, 2022. Thank you for your loyal and dedicated service to the Littleton Police Department and your commendable dedication to protect and serve. Congratulations, and have a happy retirement. The Littleton Select Board, October 11th, 2022. Thank you very much. Boy, it's going to be tough to follow that, isn't it? Mr., Mr. Administrator, what should we do next?
After that, wait, wait, you're in? How about 8A?
8, 8A?
Yeah, it's a 8.
Okay. Confirmation of appointment of Treasurer Collector Barbara.
So, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Chair, thank you. So, you know, with, with a great career like that, with Officer Janakas retiring, one opens a door for another opportunity within our finance team. We were extremely fortunate to be able to attract Barbara Tierney to our community. Barbara began her municipal career back in 2014, working for the town of Groton as an Assistant Treasurer Collector. From there, she went on in 2016, became the Treasurer Collector for the town of Townsend, and for the last four, four years, she's been the Treasurer Collector for the town of Eyre. Barbara holds a bachelor's degree in business administration with a concentration in finance. She is a certified Massachusetts Municipal Certified Treasurer and also a certified Massachusetts Municipal Collector. She comes with us with great experience. We are beyond thrilled to bring Barbara onto the team, so no further doing. Barbara Tierney.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you, nice to meet you.
Would you, if you would mind introducing yourself and just saying a few words?
Sure, so, as Anthony said, my name's Barbara Tierney. I live in the town of Paprell, Massachusetts, and I am coming from the town of Eyre. I started my municipal career as a, I'll say, third career in life, after banking and then staying home with my children, and then taking the job in Groton. I'm very excited to be here. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Any comments from the rest of the board?
Welcome, I think it's, the finance team is near and dear to my heart, so I really look forward to, you know, working with you, and I know the team's looking for, especially someone in the audience, is definitely looking forward to you coming on board, so I really appreciate you giving us a shot and jumping in with both feet. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm excited to start.
Great.
No, just welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, there is a motion, Mr. Chair, because of our employee handbook requires anything over step three for Select Board approval, we have negotiated with Barbara, we have proposed motion for the board tonight.
Move that the Select Board vote to approve the appointment of Treasurer Collector Barbara Tierney at a grade of, grade 12, step five.
Sorry, motion made by Gary, seconded by Mark. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Welcome.
Barbara will, Barbara will be joining us. Barbara will be joining us on December 5th, so she has to complete her commitment to the town of Eyre, and then she'll be with us for the holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, next. Establish the creation of an Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee. Hello. Welcome.
Thank you for not having me go after Officer Janakas.
Yeah, right.
So, I'm Alicia Day, I'm the Director for Parks and Recreation here in town, and I sent a memo to the Select Board about our Open Space and Recreation Plan. So, we had completed one in 2016, and it will expire this, not this November, but the next November, so 2023. So, this is an extremely important plan that allows our town to be able to have access to grants on the Commonwealth level, and so it's something we really don't want to let fall to the side. We want to continue working and creating this document. So, Springtown meeting last year, the, or sorry, this past, Article 10 was approved for $30,000 from the Community Preservation Committee to create that Open Space and Recreation Plan. So, I will be working with Ryan Farrar in, to be able to create a request for quotes, to select a contractor so we can start working on that plan. The Commonwealth suggests about 16 months to complete the plan, and at this point, as we're in October, we have 13 months to complete the plan. So, we really wanted to be able to get the ball rolling on this and, and get moving so that we could do this thoughtfully and in a concise manner. So, that's why I'm before you tonight, to ask if we can have you create an Open Space Recreation and Planning Committee. So, this is different than the Implementation Committee, and this group would be involved with the contractor that we would select to be able to complete this report. And on the memo as well, there's a list of selected individuals or spots from different commissions and boards that a lot of other towns have added into or had as a collective for their Open Space and Recreation Plans. So, that would consist, consist of a Conservation Commission member, a Planning Board member, Park Commission member, Agricultural Committee member, Light and Water Commission member, Clean Lakes Committee member, and one citizen at large. So, that kind of gives a quick overview of everything that was in my memo. Questions, comments, concerns?
Will the $30,000 be the sum total? Will that cover everything?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Mark, I know you have been raising this issue a couple of times.
Yeah, I've been pushing for this to go forward, so I'm glad to see that it is. My other question is, on the seven reps, is this, how does this compare to the one we did six years ago, the membership?
Um, we had different members. There were, I'm trying to think, so there was one Park Commission member, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, a few folks from the Littleton trustees and conservation as well. So, one other thing that I'm suggesting in this that would be a bit different from last year as well, would to be have some non-voting ex officio members from town departments. That would include Conservation, Parks and Recreation, Towning, and Town Administrator or representative, representative for Town Administrator, so, yeah.
Ms. Napoli, do you have anything to add?
Sure. So, can you just say that, I'm sorry, Alicia, that composition again? Conservation, planning, park and rec?
You, yeah, agriculture, Light and Water Commission, Clean Lakes Committee, and One Citizen at Large.
Is, yeah, I'm just surprised that the Select Board wasn't included on the composition of the committee.
They weren't involved last time, but you guys can create the committee, so if that's something you would like to see on there, then that's your purview.
Right, that, that was going to be my question, so you weren't involved last time?
I was involved last time.
No.
The Select Board wasn't, yeah.
No, no, yep.
Okay, I thought for some reason that I never had been, okay. Yeah, I was just curious. And so who, and so the Select Board appoints the Citizen at Large?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Wilson?
No, I think the extra group maybe might want to have something either with the Disabilities Commission or the, even the Council on Aging, just because of that, knowing that that population especially is growing, and we're talking about some of the outdoor recreational activities, just so that group is represented.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering, the same kind of thing, is that there's, like, BPAC's not on there, and I, um.
I know you can't have everybody on there.
I know, it's a fine line between how many you want to have, I mean, if you have too many, if you don't actually make progress, so.
Well, BPAC is spearheading the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, so they certainly have their work cut out for them this year. This isn't something that the Select Board would need to decide on tonight, if you want to consider and think about it, and think about the composition, and propose something different. You table this till the next meeting, too.
I would, I would, I would advocate pretty strongly including someone from the Littleton Conservation Trust onto this, as I think they have a comprehensive understanding of open space, potentially, open space that's upcoming. I think they could add a lot to that group, but if it's going to be a non-voting member, perhaps they're just not participating in that, in that way.
Is the Conservation Trust, they're an independent organization, right? They're not a town?
They're not a town.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I personally, I just, I think what I would like to do, honestly, is just wait till Chuck is here, maybe think about this for a little bit, and then get Chuck's input as well before we make a decision.
Yeah, what's our timeline for this, for this? That was the other thing.
Yeah, so the, so the Commonwealth suggests about 16 months, and currently, we're looking at 13, if we're including October. So, it is something, you know, we would want to be able to move relatively quickly to get this, because there's a lot of data that has to be compiled, so, you know, it genuinely will take that amount of time to complete the, the document.
Could we establish the committee tonight without finalizing the membership and allow at least the beginnings of contracting with the consultant?
Well, we can, we can do that as staff, staff still going to be working through some of the details leading up to this, so.
I guess I'm saying, is, is delaying deciding on the specific composition going to, going to actually impact the work that's going to be done?
I was going to word this a little differently, is if we voted the seven tonight, we could vote next meeting to add two more if we chose, right? Because all of these committees are going to have to meet and appoint someone, so the longer we wait, it's going to be another cycle for them to meet.
Right, that's a great point, yeah.
I would prefer we voted these seven, and then if we decided to expand it to nine, we do so.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with a nine. For this type of committee, nine isn't crazy. Everyone needs to be vested in this, and it's, it's pretty comprehensive.
It's a big, it's a big project, for sure.
I, I agree with Mark, I think we'd be better off going forward now and then adjusting it if necessary, because he's right, all of these are going to have to, to meet to vote someone on and decide.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, that sounds fine to me. I just, I, I get cautious about having a committee have too many members.
I know.
Just from past experience, as we know, it's very difficult sometimes when you have a large group like that, and you run into quorum issues and things, because people are busy, so.
And I went back and forth, and, and I felt like these were the, the seven most common that you saw in reports across the Commonwealth, yeah.
Yep.
Do you want me to speak to those extra members in the motion? Or just?
Do, do we need to speak to the ex officio members, or do, can we, do we just need to do the motion?
You can just set this up.
Because we can always change it.
Move that the Select Board approve the request to establish an Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee consisting of the following seven representatives: one Conservation Commission member, one Planning Board member, one Park Commission member, one Agricultural Committee member, one Light and Water Commission member, one Clean Lakes Committee member, and one Citizen at Large.
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries 4-0.
Excellent.
Let's get started.
Let's get going. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, you know, if I may just say, I want to thank Alicia for really stepping up. I asked her to leave the charge on this for staff, and, and she did, so I appreciate her stepping up to the plate when we needed somebody to do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia.
I have, I have a question about the Implementation Committee. It, it looks on the town website like it hasn't met since 2016, is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have 13 months, but that's going to need to be looked at, because there's some non-residents now on that have moved out of town, so I saw that, too.
Okay. All right, now we're on to our first agenda item. Town Clerk, approval of the warrant for the state election. Good, good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. So, before you tonight, you'll have the warrant for the November 8th, 2022 state election, which I am asking you to approve and sign.
All right, any questions from the board on the election warrant? Nope, nope. Ready for a motion. Mr. Vice Chair, go for it.
Move that the Select Board vote to approve the Commonwealth of Massachusetts election warrant for the November 8th, 2022 state election.
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Got your work cut out now.
All right, 2B, approval of the evacuation plan.
So, thank you again. So, before you have two different plans, we are looking to ask you to look at example two, which is, talks about short-term and long-term evacuation plan for all of our elections. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has stated to all cities and towns that you must have this in place, and by doing so, we're coming, I'm coming here this evening to ask you to take a look, I'm sure you've had a chance, hopefully, had a chance to look at both of them, but where we would like you to accept example two, which basically talks about short-term and long-term procedures, and the reason for that is, the initial procedures that we, we talk about are simple things, when there's a fire, fire drill or something that happens beyond our control, that we have to evacuate the location, and then we go into the long-term as to when we have to leave the actual location, everything that has to be done, and all the different groups that we have to get together in order to make that move.
Has the police department reviewed this?
I haven't had a chance to talk to Matt because of obvious reasons, but we put this together last week, and so.
Is there any problem with us changing it at any time?
No, it can be, it can be changed if necessary, yeah. But as of right now, it's basically, you know, the police offer, the police officer that is there and would be, the one that would be overseeing all of our movement, and they would have to have everything in sight to be sure that nothing, nothing happens to anything, so.
Questions or comments from the board?
Just the option one, option two.
Yep.
So, they're not working against each other, this is, depending on where we are?
They, they don't work, the two, the two different options that I gave to you.
Yeah.
And one's just a little bit more detail in the sense of breaking it down to short-term, long-term. Sometimes we would just have to leave the area and go outside, and so that's why we did the short-term versus, and then the long-term. And, and the first one is basically just, it does kind of the same, same thing, it just breaks it down a little bit differently.
Okay, but we do need to decide on one of the two.
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you, that's worth it.
Yes.
She, she recommended option two.
That's the next question.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Ronbacher, any questions? Nope. Okay.
Yeah, you can't have enough detail.
Yeah, so, well, let's go with option two, then.
Means that.
Right. Would you do the motion?
Yeah, I want to make sure we're all agreeing on two.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay, yep.
Okay. Move that the Select Board vote to approve option two as the evacuation plan for the election days, as presented by Town Clerk.
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
And I'm also, I'm still up. So, I'm also here this evening representing the Friends of Veterans, and they're requesting, I think before you, you have pictures of the cards, but we're looking to do cards at the common, we'd like to put them up on a couple of the trees that are up there from Thanksgiving to January 2nd. This is an idea of what the card's actually going to look like. I do have others if you're interested in looking at them, but we also have some of the older cards that, so that particular card is a smaller card, looks like this, and on the back it says, "Littleton thanks you for your service." And then the older cards that were already done before are a little bit larger ones, and it pretty much says the same thing, but, so we're looking to have permission to use the trees, and as I said, from Thanksgiving to January 2nd.
Any comments from the board or questions?
My question by holding up the cards, because I just.
Right. Mr., Mr. Clerk for the night?
All right. Move that the Select Board vote to approve the Friends of Veterans to hang veteran cards on trees on the Littleton Town Common from Thanksgiving to January 2nd.
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Mark. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Administrator, I realize that we didn't do mail. Do we need to do that?
I was, I was going to remind you of it after we, I figured we can go through department updates, and then.
Okay, sounds good, all right.
Before we do open our public comment.
Water Department, acceptance of gift from the Water Commissioners via the Montanari King Street Realty Trust.
So, I guess I'll take that.
I thought we were going to wait until there was a commissioner here.
Yeah, unfortunately, Commissioner Pocassick couldn't make it tonight, so I got that call later this afternoon. So, I'm, I'm happy to talk about it. The Water Department, through this, through the transaction in acquiring 242 King Street, received a donation of $200,000. That donation, they made an agreement with the CPC to deposit that into the CPC so we can get that match, and in return, the Stillwater Commissioners would solicit projects for a recreational field and then have to bring it back to the CPC. So, that's part one, and part two, what I mentioned in the packet is, if the board would like, you know, I would suggest that we put together our own proposal to the Water Commissioners and, and let, and ask for that $200,000 to be used towards the field that we're building at Cooper Farms. That's certainly active recreation, which is part of the requirements, so.
Okay. Any comments from the board on this?
We're not approving the MOU, that's already been approved and signed by the.
By the CPC and the Water Commissioners, correct. It was just in there for informational purposes.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, if, you know, the Commissioners are here, that it makes a whole lot of sense to use it towards the current project that's right in front of us, that, that would be the only, I would strongly urge that be considered, you know, unless there was some, something already marked for this, but I, nothing that I'm aware of.
And I did mention that to Nick today, to let him know that that was what I'd be recommending to the board, and he didn't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
He just said, you know, somebody could reach out to Ivan and just let him know, and.
And if I could add to that, too, Chair, in attending the CPC meeting on the, it's the 22nd, they're also aware of this grant being out there, and the CPC expressed, at least in general terms, strong support for application of this grant toward the Cooper Farm project as well.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd save about $60,000 in interest.
Yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense.
So, are they going to have enough, like, a official process to solicit proposals, the Water Commissioners? Because it says they shall solicit proposals, or is it just random proposals? Like, is there a deadline, or?
There's no deadline, they, Nick didn't, you know, express that they were going to go through a formal process, and I told him that I would be sending an email after this, if that was the will of the Select Board to request that, this project be considered for that.
Right. I just want to, I'm just curious if there's maybe other projects out there that the public might be. that the public might be interested in that we just don't know about, opposed to just having the process go forward this way. Not that I'm opposed to asking them to use this money for the tennis court project up at the Cooper Farm, but just to see if there's, if we're just following a transparent process, if they are going to be soliciting donations, just to see how they were planning on letting the public know that they would be soliciting donations. We just don't know that.
Proposals?
Or proposals, sorry.
I guess I have one more comment on it. So I obviously wasn't on the board during the purchase of the land. I think the Montanari property, correct, off next to Russell.
And that wasn't, the Select Board wasn't involved in that in any way?
I guess the question was during that process, the RFP process for this, was it, is this allowed, or was this allowed as part of the bid process, saying if I am considered, I would donate back $200,000? Was that part of the RFP, or this came up after? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, honestly, I don't know. We weren't part of it. So I don't know what the parameters were in on the RFP. I don't think so. It may have just been, normally something like that's not in the RFP. It just might be something that the person would like to do on their kindness of their heart, but I'm not aware of it. Gary.
Okay. I'm strongly urging option, motion two here.
Yeah, I mean, let's make, let's make both motions tonight. I think we should make both motions.
Oh, we are doing both motions?
I mean, I think we should authorize, we should authorize Anthony to.
Oh, and then two was an option.
Right. You have to accept the gift. Only the Select Board can accept the gift.
Yeah.
On behalf of.
The Commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, interesting.
Water Department still is a water, the town's Department, so.
Is that motion actually worded, it's not a gift from the, it's a gift to the, I'm just, a gift from the Littleton Water Commissioners?
It's a gift to the town from them via Mark, I believe is what it's saying. Since we have to accept the gift, I think it is actually a gift from the Commissioners to the town.
I understand that part, but it's just, it's worded kind of strangely that it says it ends up in the CPC. It's on behalf of, I guess. Okay. I don't know.
That was, that was something that they worked out with the CPC, so.
The MOU was, yes.
Yeah, exactly.
I would really like the Water Commissioners here, I, this, and I, this is just me, but I will read the motion. But I, when I see the $200,000, I'm thinking, it's just an odd, did the Water Commissioners, was there a discussion with the landowners saying, we want to build a baseball field on X or a soccer field? Was that part of this, or was this just giving it back and saying, do what you want with it CPC as long as it's used for recreation?
You can table this.
I'm just, we held it because we wanted someone here.
That's a fair, that's absolutely right, yeah.
Gary, if you want, we can request a joint meeting with the Water Commissioners for the 24th.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't need the whole board here. It's just one representative to be able to answer a couple of the questions. It may, I mean.
Like, how did this come about, you mean?
Yeah. It's a big gift. And it, it's just, knowing that it's being utilized for that, was there a discussion with the Water Commissioners of what they wanted to use it for, before we start going into, well, the tennis courts, if we're just.
Well, we're, I mean, we're going to ask for, to be specifically earmarked for the tennis courts, but that's why they say that they're going to solicit proposals for, there might be other projects.
I think there are enough questions here that we should have Commissioner in the room so that we can discuss it. And I don't think it's going to affect, I don't think it's time-sensitive in, like, in relation to the tennis courts.
Yeah, we meet one more time this month, right?
24.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry.
No, I think that you made an excellent point, and I think we should wait and discuss it. Cemetery Department, request to hire Assistant Cemetery Superintendent.
So I'll tee it up for you, okay. So went through the process of looking, soliciting applicants for the Assistant Superintendent. Didn't have a really large pool, but it was an impressive candidate that came out of that, somebody with experience working in the cemetery for the town of Acton. With that, in order to attract him to come to Littleton, again, this is something similar to the case of the Treasure Collector, we need to go above step three. And that's what the request and ask is tonight. The, in speaking in, with TC, we've agreed that, our policy also states that you have to be here a year before you get a step raise. So even though he's coming in at a higher step, he wouldn't be eligible for a step raise until a year from this July. Because he'll get his, he'll come in, then he's going to get readjusted if Town Meeting approves the cop and class studies, so.
Okay.
So he'll wait.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Do you have anything to add?
I do not. Anthony articulated very well the point. And it's just that, you know, we'd love to offer the job to this outstanding candidate, but we'd like to be able to offer them what they make now.
Okay. I noticed he had a pesticide license, Cindy.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that.
Okay, good. All right. Any other comments or questions?
Maybe this is more, of course, Gary, do you know how this grades out in the new?
Yeah, I mean, there's still some shuffling going on, but it'd be either a four or five, step four or five on the, on the new scale.
Okay, sure. I guess we're ready for a motion, unless you have any other comments?
I just see, yeah, I think I'm.
Okay.
Be good.
I think we're good.
Move the Select Board vote to approve the hiring of Ian Hefferman as Assistant Cemetery Superintendent at grade eight, step seven.
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries four zero.
Awesome.
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Do you have a start date or any much?
Thank you.
A start date?
ASAP.
That's what I like to hear. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Acceptance of a donation from DCU to the Police Department.
I'll take this one.
Thank you.
The Police Department receive annually, they, they receive a generous gift from, a donation from DCU, Digital Credit Union, in the amount of $2,500. The Board's policy is anything over $500 comes before the Board for approval. Chief has a memo inside there. Obviously, he couldn't make it tonight, but.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board on this? Otherwise, we'll go for a motion.
Move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Master Law, Section 40, Chapter 44, Section 53A, Imperant's Policy on Solicitation and Acceptance of Monetary and Non-Monetary Gifts for Public Purpose, to accept a donation to the Police Department for the future support of community policing efforts from Digital Credit Union in the amount of $2,500.
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries four zero. Thank you, DCU. You're watching.
Mr. Chair, I, they can call that. I brought it up before on, do we, is it a, how do we get it to the point where those type of things, now $2,500 is a pretty significant amount, but where we, you could approve it and then just brief us that you.
So it's part of the.
We're not going to ever say no.
Right. It's part of the Select Board policy. So it's something that, you know, I know that Cindy's working on some stuff, Mark has worked on it, we're working on it, too. So you should stay stopped during the year with some of the changes that we're going to recommend.
Okay.
That's.
It's great if they want to be here, then we could bring it to the front, but just to.
I agree.
Accept it, we can thank them just as easily by you accepting the donation and then saying it on.
All right. Mail, back to mail?
Back to mail.
Or going backwards?
We're going backwards. All right. So the first item, Mr. Chair, is on Saturday, October 15, there'll be, from 1:30 to 4, will be the Browns Woods and Town Forest Walk. This is in conjunction with, I believe, the Conservation Committee, the Conservation Trust, Littleton Conservation Trust, Subvalley Trustees. We'll be walking that. I think the loop is about two miles, if I'm not mistaken. So that's this Saturday. I think that sounds like a great take. There's a lot of work that's been done on the trails, so, you know, certainly I'm going to try to get myself back here to take advantage of that. The next item is on Wednesday, October 19, from 6 to 7, the Mass Citizens Climate Forum is having a forum, a public forum, and it's hosted by FATV, which is Fitchburg Access TV. And it's also, you can remote in and participate through Zoom, so for those that are interested. On November 11, there'll be the rededication ceremony of the World War I Memorial. It's on the corner of King and Shattuck Street, Friday, November 11 at 11:00 AM. The Select Board Napoli has done a tremendous amount of work on this project and really come out great.
I may interject there. We, I was, I was reading that, and we might want to put something out on the parking issue, because I know when it's set at the common, we have the whole section of the road, enough parking, but there, it's kind of where, maybe we tell people to park at Shattuck further down. It's just not, I don't know where you're going to put everybody that.
Yeah. We do have plenty of parking at Town Hall.
That's what I mean. Maybe we just say, parking, please park at Town Hall if you need to.
We can update the news and announcements section on the website and remind people to park, please park at Town Hall.
Yeah, let's keep them off a great road. Thanks, Chris.
Sure. The next thing is National Grids doing their three-year Energy Efficiency Plan Term Report. In doing so, they have to have a public hearing. That public hearing is Thursday, October 27, beginning at 2:00 PM. This is a notice that goes to all the communities that National Grid Services. And the last item, we received a letter from the Long Lake Association. They're, they would like to meet with the Select Board, discuss improvements in preservation of the Long Lake area. It's been quite a while since we've had a project down there. So perhaps we could schedule this for another meeting and invite them in.
I would, I would suggest we include the Water Department on that. I know that in the past, they have been involved in, in, there were some wetland gardens or wetland stream gardens that Savvas put in place, I believe, to help treat some of the water.
So perhaps we could do a joint meeting with the Clean Lakes Committee, and then, and then Matt Silverman, the, for the representative from the Water Department would be present, too.
That'd be great.
This way, it's covering every place and all the various lakes, too, in town.
Yeah. The other thing that I thought was, this seems like a area that there's a lot of grant money for watershed protection, and I'm wondering if we can help the Long Lake Association find a way to start investigating and/or getting some of those grants, because that, there must be millions and millions of dollars out there.
And I think that was their intent. When I spoke to former Board Member Melissa Hebert, that was exactly what she'd like to see happen, too.
Good. Thank you.
I was just thinking, if I read the letter, some of it surprised me. I didn't realize it was on an impaired list, you know, things like that. But it's so critical, it's such a critical resource, recreational resource for Littleton. It's a lot of our youth programs and, as well as wildlife. So I think this probably needs to be moved up sooner than later, as far as having this meeting and seeing what we can do as a board. I don't.
Any preference when you want to bring it back? Under the first and seventh, we have, first is the classification info session, first.
The 7th.
November 7. And then the following meeting is the tax classification rate setting. Is this something you want to wait till December, or would you want to try to squeeze it in for the next meeting?
We might be able to get it on the 7. I mean, the tax classification isn't huge usually. It's, but.
No.
I mean, I guess it depends on the schedules of all of the other parties as well, so.
We'll be jolting, I think the date in November would work for them.
That'd be great. Thanks. All right. Public input or members' updates? Who's this strange-looking man approaching the podium?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Sorry I'm squinting tonight. I'm actually just having an ocular migraine. There's no pain involved. I didn't take any gummies. That being said, I'm actually here tonight to remind everybody that Park and Rec has a cornhole league up at the Tavern on Tuesday nights. And the Land Use Department put a team together. You see three of the members of the team tonight. If you haven't met Tim Pearson, he is our Assistant Conservation Agent, so I thought it was a good opportunity to introduce him also. He's a, you know, a value-added individual in our office, and he's actually the one that rallied us, too, to join the team.
Is he a ringer?
I don't want to spill the beans.
I'm a bit of a ringer.
Okay.
So I'm also glad that he came tonight just to see how our government works. So I'm glad he's here. Thought it'd be a good opportunity to, thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
Any other public input? If not, we'll go to members' updates. Mr. Ronbacher?
I've been on vacation for most of the last two weeks since our last meeting. I'm suffering from a bit of exhaustion at the moment, having, it is 1:30.
AM.
AM. Yeah, so the one announcement I did have is the Friends of Library Book Sale will be in this room this weekend, so come on down.
Great. Ms. Napoli?
I just wanted to maybe just mention the excellent work that's been done on our trails by our scout troops. I know Dexter Corey is one of the people that did an excellent job completing a plank walk on one of the trails, and I know there was another.
Brian Beltrami?
Thank you, who did some work as well. And it looks great. It's really, what a great idea. I mean, we've been so fortunate to have these young adults come forward and try to improve our walking trails in town. It's really added a lot. I've seen comments on social media, people that have been out actually enjoying the trails more so, I think, than they would have if those boardwalks hadn't been built. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
And Brandon Lavoy, who, who cut that trail in the first place last year, right? That all started with an Eagle project. That was really great. Yeah. Mr. Wilson?
Just the shirt for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I want to thank Littleton Fire Department for letting me have this wonderful shirt, just kind of showing support. All of us have been touched by either a loved one or a friend, or who either survived, some people are still fighting the battle, or those that we've lost. Just to recognize and support those in need and give people a hug when they need it that are afflicted by this horrible, horrible disease. On the happier notes, Oktoberfest was a great success. I did go there. I got to meet some of the new vendors. Dirigible was in there and our, some of our other community commercial businesses were there representing. So everything, it was fun. It was a good day. It was, weather kind of held off. It was a little rainy early on, but it worked out to be nice.
Was the beer cold enough?
Yeah, it was quite cold. It was very good.
Good.
Thank you for asking.
I know how important that is to people.
Yes. And lastly, just wishing Chief Purnard well. I hope he's recovering, and we look forward to having him back at work.
I have several updates, primarily about the gun dealers at the mill. And this is also mostly, I think this is as much for other board members as anyone else. I spoke to the Giffords Law Center twice. One of our residents actually reached out, and they are an organization that helps municipalities craft gun legislation, whether it's bylaws, zoning ordinances, or what have you. And they have, the attorney from Giffords has connected with our town council, and so they are, they don't offer legal advice, but they do offer some guidance on how to craft a zoning bylaw. I also, I also spoke to the Attorney General's Office a couple times. Their Chief of Policy called me and spoke to me. And I just, I didn't want anyone to think that there was radio silence on their end. I think that they, she wanted to make sure that I knew that, you know, they were aware of the situation. It was a little bit frustrating because I really, I wouldn't say that I got any, you know, the answer that everyone wants to know is that, you know, why, why aren't these people, if they're doing something illegal, being, why aren't they being prosecuted? And she couldn't really comment on it. And she said, you know, if there's an investigation, or there will be an investigation, we can't say anything. But I did speak to her a couple times. And then I met with residents several times. Two of the conversations I had that were very interesting were about communication, which was brought up at the meet, the last meeting we had about the gun shops. And I think that their contention was primarily that, yeah, we send people out a warrant, and yes, there are meeting agendas and minutes, but it's not a very easily understood way to really get into the issues that the people are interested in. It's really too bad. We don't have a newspaper anymore. Nevertheless, I think there might be a group of residents who might be interested in trying to start some sort of objective summary or recap of meetings. Because I do not, I'm certain that no temp employee has the time to. Because I do not, I, I'm certain that no temp employee has the time to do that. And I do think that there's a gap there. I think that's it. All right. Item four, appointments. Clean Lakes Committee.
So we have a vacancy on the Clean Lakes for the alternate Mill Pond. And we've received one applicant, Mr. Luigi Jacovelo. I'm sorry, I butchered that. Being Italian, I know I'm going to be thrown out of the sorority, but he's here this evening for looking to be appointed as the Mill Pond alternate.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Were you a butcher when you phoned me?
I'm telling you. My parents would be ashamed of myself, and I'm not.
English, Icavelo, Italian, Jacovelo.
Okay. I got it.
One of the reasons I was interested in this is I live at Mill Pond Apartments. My apartment, my living room, I look out and I see the pond with the swans and the ducks and all the wildlife. And we got a stupid beaver back there that's cutting down trees. But I'm very interested because in the summer, there's a wicked odor that comes off of that pond. I can't open my living room window. So I'm very interested in the Clean Lakes Committee. If we, if we could get something done. I appreciate the, the chance to help the committee in any way I can. I'm retired, I've got time. I can do some things.
Thank, thank you. I, I really appreciate you volunteering your time. I know we had, the Army Corps of Engineers was going to do something with Mill Pond a few years ago, and it ultimately fell through, I believe.
That was, that's been going on for quite a while.
Yeah.
And then we received, what, notification, I think the last year, that it's not high on the list anymore, and that they were moving, moving away from the dredging project.
Okay. Well, perhaps we can get that started again.
Thank you.
Excuse me if I couldn't.
Yes, please.
Could you pronounce your last name again?
Jacavella.
Jacavella. Thank you.
Icavelo. Or Jacovelo.
Okay, thank you. Move the Select Board vote to appoint, first name?
Luigi.
Luigi Jacavelo. As a Mill Pond alternate member to fulfill the vacant term on the Clean Lakes Committee expiring June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries 4-0. Welcome, sir. Please get sworn in by the town clerk.
I'll do my best.
Thank you very much. All right. Select Board discussions, update on the Gog Orchard. Ms. Napoli?
Oh, certainly.
Take it away.
Thank you. Okay, so I did visit the orchard. We had talked last meeting about the trees that I, that the consultant from UMass had identified that they had fire blight, that they needed to be removed. So there's 10, there's 10 of those trees. It's not a lot. They're not big trees. It's certainly something, we kind of joked at the last meeting, that we could do it ourselves. We can do it ourselves. I'm pretty confident with a chainsaw and a pickup truck, we can just clear those trees. I did count the other trees that they had, the consultant had recommended we prune. And it's about 100 trees. So I would like the board's support in maybe going forward and issuing that RFP to, to move forward and, and prune those trees in that designated area. We decided at the last meeting that we weren't going to go forward and prune Fields 4 and 5, which had been pruned last year. Lease negotiations are still moving forward with our applicant, the respondent to the RFP. They're going slower than I would like, and I was talking to Mr. Ansaldi about that. So we're working with town council, tried, to try to get some more definitive information from the respondent to help move the conversation forward. Because it's just kind of, we're getting dribs and drabs of information. We're not getting any substance from him. And it's really, we really just want to get everything together in a cohesive format so that we can bring it to the board and move that discussion forward. And the other thing that I wanted to mention to the board is, we would talked about pesticide application. I was thinking that it might be helpful as a town if we had someone on staff that had a pesticide application license. I know that Mr. Bailey, TC Bailey was here earlier. He does have an applicator license. It's not specific to an orchard, an apple orchard. And then, you know, the person that we just appointed as well has a license as well. It's something that I think the board, it's worth exploring as a town, if we're going to own an orchard, just so that we're not dependent on somebody else, you know, that we have a lease contract with. Because they can have overturn on their end, and then we're left with what we've dealt with since the last LSC departed. We haven't been able to apply pesticides to the orchard, and we really need to do that this year. That it's kind of non-negotiable that that needs to be done. So I was just thinking, it might be helpful if we could talk to TC and see what kind of certification. Actually, the certification itself to get the applicator license is really simple. Based on what we learned in the working group, it's, they liken it to getting your learner's permit. So I think it's worth exploring that. And I know the biggest piece of it is, is that it's very time-consuming. When you need to apply the pesticides, you need to drop whatever else you're doing and do that. Attend to the orchard. So that's something that I think it's worth maybe having a conversation with TC and that department to see if they're willing, interested to get their applicator license, and that that's something that we should maybe consider having internal, in-house, so that we're not so dependent on somebody else.
There, I mean, with two members that are certified in that, I mean, the season, the cemetery, really, once the ground is frozen, I don't know if that's a time when you can still put.
I believe you do it in the, in the, in the spring, early, early spring before.
Okay. I was just wondering, if it lined up nice where they're not really that busy, you'd have a time period where they'd be able to probably do that.
Normally, they say the first application is March.
Yeah.
We also don't know, I mean, we don't know if the license necessarily covers the types of pesticides and the applications that they are going to need to do on the orchard.
Yeah, they would need to get a different certification for that. And then we do, we need to talk about equipment that would be needed and purchasing the pesticide. So it's, it's involved, and it's going to cost some money. So I just wanted to see if the board was interested in exploring that.
Still not as much as hiring a contractor to do it.
I mean, if we have to buy equipment, it might be.
Right.
Again, it's a long-term, short-term question.
Right. I mean, ideally, the LSC that's coming in will have somebody on staff that can handle that, and we don't need to worry about it. I'm just thinking of it more as a safeguard in the event that that person, for whatever reason, can't apply the pesticides when they need to. It might be nice if we had somebody in-house that could be capable of doing that.
So regarding the pruning, let's issue the RFP so that we don't get caught behind it, with understanding that if the tenant does come in and agrees that they want to prune in a certain way, we just don't, we just don't award the RFP to anyone.
Right. It'd be nice just to get it out there, though.
So, so we can't do an RFP without having a funding source.
Okay.
And I don't think that, based on 100 trees, I don't think that would be over $10,000. I, because I think, Fields 4, 5 was thousands, right?
Right.
And we, I think the total was $30,000 for, I think it was.
What was the quote per tree that we saw when, when Tim gave us the last presentation?
Was it like $9?
Yeah, it's something like that. It's definitely more than $10,000.
No. So, so we probably could.
Just get five quotes. Oh, three quotes, sorry.
Yeah, we could just do three. Just solicit three quotes, and then, you know, we'll need to take that out, out of somebody's budget or, you know, ideally, like, like Cindy said, you know, if we can wrap up negotiation for the end of the calendar year, that'd be great, so we can plan accordingly. But if not, then, then it might be the bigger ask. We'd have to, not only the pesticide licenses, like you said, and the, and the tools and equipment that's used for that. So we'd have a lot of work to do. So I'm hoping to, we need some time to do that, too.
Right.
Great. And then as far as cutting them down, I'm, I'm in. We just need to decide on it.
We just need to pick a day.
And also make sure that we have some way to pull away all the, all the debris, because that was a problem when it was pruned. We need to make sure that we have someone to haul away all the, all the cuttings.
Yeah, so it's basically, yeah, I was, we were thinking, honestly, just cut down the trees and just put the wood in a pickup truck and see who, who wants it.
I mean, do you want to coordinate that?
I'll coordinate.
People love that for fireworks.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I was out there today. Yeah, the trees aren't that big.
Okay.
Do you grind the, the stumps and something like that, or do they come?
I honestly, I don't know that, I think the stumps would come right out. The trees are in that bad a shape, but that's something we can think about, too.
I guess worst case, if we got a backhoe in there for an hour, we could probably just yank them all out.
Yeah, so maybe we can have a conversation. Maybe DPW can assist us.
Right, yeah.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Fiscal year goals, let's postpone that again, because Chuck isn't here. Sorry. Personnel Advisory Committee membership, three to five?
Yeah, I had put that, I requested that be put on. Just, you know, talking with Michelle, and I, I think moving that to five would make that committee a lot more efficient. The problem right now, you would find, especially with classification, I love positions and things like that, if, if I'm sitting here with you, we can't even discuss it because we have a quorum.
Right.
So we can't sit down. So I, I think it just makes, it makes sense, just to have that extra thing. So now two people can actually sit down and discuss maybe a position description that they need to work on.
And bring it to the rest of the board.
Yeah. It just makes it a little bit.
How big was the Personnel Advisory?
We were, we were seven, right?
It was seven?
Were we seven? Were you a member, an active member?
At one point in time.
It was seven.
It was seven?
Yeah.
Select Board had a member, and yeah.
And then we had, we had a manager representative and a non-manager employee rep on that, too. So we had two employees, so maybe it was seven.
Okay. Okay.
And I know that's not all they do, but I just think it would help just with that. For that alone, anything they're working on, that they could actually be more efficient, having two people discuss things and then bringing it to the board without violating.
Any other comments on this?
Are we just taking, the two added members are general members or citizens? I mean, where are they coming from?
Yeah. I, I think before, we had it as citizens at large. That's a, that's a part of the discussion I think we need to have, too.
You know, I, I, there's been, just.
HR experience, for cert, for sure.
It's just my two cents, what we've been going through, you know, Steve Anudie and Gary have been instrumental in getting the carbon class plan back on track. So perhaps maybe, you know, Steve, now that we have a treasurer, we'll be back as a Fincom rep. So if you wanted to do those two last parts as one Fincom, one Select Board, that's just a, just a suggestion.
The only, making it a Select Board is tricky because it's, I just happen to have that experience, where it wouldn't always be the case, so.
So who, who are the current, who are the current members? What are the, what are the, what are the roles right now, or the positions right now, determined as?
Citizens with.
All three citizens at large, okay.
Yeah.
So there's nothing wrong with a board member becoming a citizen at large. You would just, correct?
Right.
So I mean, if it's something.
If it's two more, you still can be on it as a member of the Select Board.
I mean, do you have any problem with making it five citizens at large?
No, I was just asking.
Yeah, the HR experience is the critical piece. Finance doesn't. Sure, it helps. The municipal HR experience is probably even the greater asset.
Okay.
That would be preferred, probably. But in general, I think an HR professional understands all the aspects of HR.
Well, I know when we had the committee before, and we took it down, when the employees felt, some of the employees felt slighted when they were taken off and didn't have the same say. So I wasn't sure if we wanted to have employee reps, too, or.
Yeah, this isn't, this board makes no policy decision or anything, so they're really, literally there to assist the HR director. What she, if she needs a task or a policy update or position descriptions looked at, classification, they, they can be charged with helping with that, so I don't know.
That's not a regulatory board in any way.
No, no, this is literally us.
Plus, employees would have the opportunity to appear before the Select Board. As Select Napoli said at a previous meeting, that, you know, you have to have a public hearing when you change something, under handbook or even the rules and regulations of the Select Board. So, you know, we would advertise it, let employees know, and they can, off comments at that point.
Okay. Okay, I guess we're ready for a motion, then.
Move the Select Board vote to increase the number of members of the Personnel Advisory Committee from three to five.
Second. Motion made by Gary, seconded by Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
We'll have that advertised this week.
Thank you.
And when we have two other names, we'll look forward to that.
The next item is from me. Senator Eldridge asked me to draft this, and I believe he asked both the Planning Board and the Select Board to draft this letter, officially requesting assistance from the Attorney General's Office to address the situation at the mill. You know, I, I think that this is, this is, you know, obviously, the Attorney General has reached out to me and spoke about this situation with me. I think that I don't want to represent that they are not doing anything, or that we have not heard from them. I know that Chief Bernard has also spoken to them. And so I guess, yeah, that's what I'm going to say about that. And I'm, I'm also, you know, again, I, I do wish that Chuck was here so that we could discuss it with all five of us. But I'm interested in what the rest of the board members have to say about it, or how you feel about it.
I like your letter.
Thank you.
It's.
Oh, that was a good start. I'm actually, I'm a little troubled by the letter, to be honest with you, Matthew. So Senator Eldridge asked you to write a letter on behalf of the Select Board to the Attorney General?
He asked us to officially request help.
But we, as a board, never voted that we want to officially ask for help.
And that's why, that's why I'm bringing it before the board.
Okay.
And not, and I've obviously not sent or sent the letter or officially endorsed it in any way.
Right. And so, and I guess my, so did he ask the Attorney General to call you?
No. Nope. That was, that was independent. And in fact, I made contact with them before this letter was even mentioned.
Did you contact them as a member of the Select Board or as a resident of Littleton?
It was, she, she contacted me as the Chair of the Board.
Okay. I just, yeah, I just, some of the wording in this letter is bothersome to me, just because there's residents in Littleton that are not troubled by the gun dealers at the mill. I can fully appreciate that some residents are, but there's many that are not. And these are business owners who have every right to be in the mill and operate the way they've been operating. We had, you know, a very lengthy meeting where we talked about the process that they must go through to obtain their licenses, the safeguards that are in place as far as measures that have been taken by, you know, our local police department and whatnot to monitor these businesses. But they do have every right to be there. I don't think that this board has any right to write a letter on behalf of the residents of Littleton, such as this has been crafted. We, as a board, can write a letter on behalf of the board, because there's five of us, We as a board can write a letter on behalf of the board because there's five of us and we can vote on whether or not we want to write a letter and what we want that letter to say. But we have no business speaking on behalf of the residents of Littleton at all because there's certainly many residents in Littleton that support these businesses and don't have a problem with them being located in the mill. So I just, I'm very much opposed to writing any letter like this. I think that we've done our diligence to the best of our ability and, you know, on, as far as the state level goes and the Attorney General, you know, Maury Healy's going to be probably Attorney General for three more months and then we don't know who's going to be the new Attorney General. I just don't think that we have any business, you know, reaching out to other organizations. You mentioned a few that you've talked to earlier about how to address this issue. I mean, these are business owners in our community who are licensed and they go through a vetted approval process. And they have every right to be here just like everybody else. So I just, I just, I'm not comfortable with this, to be honest with you.
I'm not, not, not right now, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Kind of some of the same sentiments when we're talking about the residents of Littleton because interesting enough, since our last meeting, I received many calls, running into people in Donlands, different Oktoberfest, people that were deeply upset about, in opposition that weren't able to voice themselves, that was standing up for legal businesses and they were concerned that were, the town setting up themselves to be liable for a civil suit against defamation. I mean, when, you know, the chief of police has said that by all accounts, everything is legal and the state is not saying that there's any active investigation.
They didn't say that, actually.
Except the federal.
They said they wouldn't comment on it.
Yeah, I, federal ATF comes down there and they're not pulling any licenses. So besides having too many licenses in that building because of the law that the state created forcing all online home businesses into a commercial properties across the state, I mean, I know a few communities have done, you know, some of these letters, not the letters, but the planning, I was at the Planning Board meeting on Thursday and they kind of shared some of the documents that those towns used. But that's two towns and I, we have about a hundred and whatever communities across the state that don't have those type of laws or bylaws. So we need to address, to me, addressing the problem without getting into the political debate on weapons not being dangerous, it's the person behind the, we can get into that till we're blue in the face and you'd have two sides arguing both pieces to that, mental health versus the weapon. I'm more concerned with what planning can do, the Planning Board can do to zone this because I think it makes sense not to have eighty of anything in that, in the small type community and that. I don't want to, you know, I get in the minds of different Select Board members in the past that's, where this thing was accruing, you know, in their defense, and I guess a few of the members that have been on the board even before you, in their defense, when this, when the law came down from Maury Healy.
The opinion?
Well, no, I'm just saying putting, putting all of these businesses, because the majority of states didn't put.
In fact, we're the only one who requires.
So we created this, I'm not going to say problem, but it did create a problem. It created a problem for our community, the state did. And we weren't able to, the Select Board members of the past, this thing just crept up on them and many, I have to assume, without talking to them, but some of them might have just been, this is a legal business that's moving in there. They weren't thinking anything beyond that. This is a legal business, they're authorized to do what they were doing before. They were just doing it from their homes on the internet and they're still doing it on the internet, obviously, to ninety percent of it. But I, to say the letter, this letter, I know it's going to placate ten percent of the population that is just vehemently, does not want any weapon dealers in towns or want them placed in the darkest places of the community. And it came up at the Planning Board meeting where they were talking about the pornography district being tucked away behind the old Sandbell where no business would ever go and they were talking about using potentially that as, what are we doing? We're talking, I don't like comparing the two businesses, so. And I'm speaking this because I had so many residents reach out to me on the other side that it blew my mind that we're, we're going this far as a Select Board without just specifically addressing perhaps zoning piece. You know, and I would say it, you know, I wanted to almost speak at the Planning Board meeting to the degree that if some of the things aren't acted that that Planning Board was talking about and some of the citizens were talking about, you're going, you're not going to get two-thirds vote at town meeting. The more restrictions you put on a legal business in town, you're, you're going to really have pressure with this. So of getting two-thirds vote. And that's not, I'm saying, I'm falling on either side of this. Yes, I'm a, I'm a weapons owner and I know many that are in the same boat. I'm not a weapon salesman. I don't, and I acknowledge some of the horrible things that are being said on some of these private, they're not, they're not private blogs, public blogs. I think that's, does nothing but hurt their business. And so I think that you can change the wording in this probably where we can all agree because I think it is a problem. Having that many businesses in that building. I don't think it's a threat to our schools. I will, on one of the mental health side of the things, I think it's a mental health issue. I know there's a lot of people that just don't want it. I also know that a lower receiver to an automatic weapon cannot be bought in that building. I don't care if you buy all the pieces. You cannot buy that receiver in Massachusetts, so that's not happening. So we can continue to go down that road about building a weapon. What I do know is if somebody wants to build a weapon, they're going to, they can buy all the parts online the same way, put the weapon together. And if they're doing it in Massachusetts, they're putting it together illegally and they should be held accountable and responsible for it. But I, I can't get behind just slam dunking a letter saying the residents of Littleton because if I put my name on that, I, you know, I know that people are going to be very upset that why didn't you speak up?
Okay.
Why didn't you speak up at least for, until we find out that there's some illegal activity? And if there is illegal activity and there was, and that it was even leaked that there was illegal activity, we would be, I'd be the first one behind it because I am a responsible gun owner.
Okay.
But I, until that happens, I, I don't know how we can get around just blankly saying that, you know, all the residents of Littleton want, want this, are deeply troubled by the legal violations.
Okay.
And perceived legal violations. And I, I do, I think we should talk a bit more about Maury Healy's comment on the intent of the law perhaps and why it's not being enforced. The, you know, I did talk to attorneys on, because I wanted to educate myself on why isn't this being enforced? It's because it can't be because it would lose in the Supreme Court. It would. There's no, because there's not a legal backing to it because of the Second Amendment. So it's a, it's a huge loophole and that's why we can sit here and banter and we can have public meetings and people will never agree. You know, the ten percents on either side will just be banging heads. And the, the people in the middle, like myself and many, just want the issue at hand dealt with and that's, we've got to zone this correctly. And if that's the will of the people, to zone it where they're not near schools and all those things that we don't, we feel that gun businesses shouldn't be near. I for one would think that it's where it belongs. It's 500 yards from a police station. It's all located in the exact same building. They're not scattered all over town. Much more easy to manage if you're a police department or any task force, federally, state, we know where they are. And they can be held accountable much easier that way with much less resources. So, and that's a whole different debate. I think we need to get it in front of the people, but in front of the people when we're talking about zoning and where these districts should be, we don't talk about it enough. We talk, I know a few of the members of the public spoke up about, we talked about cannabis, right, when we were going to put this in. We, we don't talk about it enough. But I also think we don't talk about it enough because it's been a legal business for the entire history of our country. So, and it's not until a lot of recent things have happened to our children in schools and across, you know, different communities that now it's to the forefront.
Okay.
And it's, it's right there and people are feared. I know because I have friends that are absolutely terrified and fearful. I don't understand that mindset, but it's a real feeling that these people are having. So we need to address that through any means necessary and I, I think the Planning Board is where this has to come from.
Okay.
That's, you know, I could probably talk, we could have a whole hour just discussion on this because there's so many pieces to this that, I've been banging my head. I've had neighbors come to me and say, what can we do? What can we do? And I've been banging my head because it, everything leads me to, it's our problem because it's our community, but it's not our problem because it's a much bigger problem that the state created. And they're not willing to give us any fix. So we're having to jump through loopholes by what? Maybe setting ourselves up for a lawsuit because we're slandering businesses that very well could be running legally.
Okay.
That's all. And I, I gotta be, I just think we have to be very careful and let the Planning Board do their work and then get it in front of the people at a town meeting and say, hey, this is our idea to pull some of this massive group of weapon sales and disperse it a little bit into areas where we're more comfortable as a, as a people. That's all.
Sir, we're not, I'm not going to take any public comment on this tonight. Thank you. No, I'm not, like, we're, we have a long debate already.
All right.
Thank you very much.
No, I was, I'm informed by federal fire law on our license.
Okay, we're, yeah, we're not going to have any.
And if you had any questions, I could answer.
Sir, no, thank you very much. We're, we're just not going to do any public comment.
So to respond to some of the things, Gary, I, I think this letter is our reaching out to the state to ask for the help, right? You said they're not providing any help. Well, we've never asked. So this is the letter to ask, right? It's not saying what they're going to do, but it's asking them to look if there is anything they can do. And it sounds like the, what you're really concerned about is in the second paragraph, the residents. And if we just change that to be many residents, then it's not as definitive like everyone's against it, right? And that might solve some of your concerns.
Actually, let me, let me, let me address some of those things too. So it's interesting, one hundred percent of the people that I've spoken to are, are opposed to the, to the shops in the mill. Like, I've, I've not heard from a single, a single person who's pro, and I, obviously I'm scary to talk to because, you know, no one's come up to me. But, but, but I want to also clarify, like, I have no interest at all. I, I believe that the, the, the business owners that are operating legally, the vast majority are perhaps a hundred percent of them. I have no interest in infringing in any way on their right to do business. I'm not interested. And, and nor do I think we should and nor do I think that legally we can. I think that the, the issues that have been raised by both, you know, primarily by the report in the Globe is that the, the way that they are doing business is, you know, getting around the legal restrictions on.
And it is, correct.
On the guns. And whether or not you, you say, well, you can do that online or you can do it in another state, okay. But I still think that's, it's no good to have it in our town and in our state. So what I'm, what I, I'm fine with changing the language of the letter and if you're not comfortable because you think it represents all the residents of Littleton, I'm, I'm absolutely fine changing it. But I do think that the, that the focus of this for me is, you know, if there are business dealers here who are intentionally trying to, you know, skirt the law and it could be selling, you know, apple juice without a license, in fact, it's something that I think is much, much more serious than that, that troubles me. And the fact that the regulatory body in this state is not enforcing this is troubling to me as well. And I'm try, I guess, I, I think that, that bringing that, raising that a bit is important to me. Nevertheless, I mean, I, you know, I hear your, your, your concerns and I'm not going to.
You think in the next three months, I, I just don't know where this goes.
No, I, I don't know where this goes either, right? Like, I, I mean, I, I understood that, like, pragmatically, I don't know what this will do, what this will accomplish. But, but I think that this was my reaction to, and to your point, Cindy, I do think that, that we should send this letter on behalf of the residents. The residents came to me, many of them, and said, why aren't you doing anything? This is a problem. Now, I don't think it's as much of a problem that, I'm sure some of them think it's more of a problem than I do. Clearly, many of them don't think it's a problem at all and just haven't talked to me. But I, I went after this because I felt that enough of them are upset and concerned about this situation and they feel as though nothing's being done.
Right.
So that's, that's where it came from.
Okay, and I can appreciate that. So Maury Healy knows full well what's happening in Littleton. The District Attorney, Mary Ann Ryan, knows full well what's happening in Littleton. Chief Bernard's already reached out to them. Clearly after the Globe article, they know full well what's happening in Littleton. We had a very public meeting. I'm certain that they know what's happening here. And there's other organizations too that have come into the mill, have inspected the mill, have found no issues. I am adamantly opposed about sending a letter on behalf of the residents of Littleton. If you want to talk to the board when Chuck's here about sending a letter on behalf of the Select Board, then that's fine. But I will absolutely not support a letter on behalf of the residents of Littleton. And I honestly, I don't think that we should be sending this letter anyways, but certainly that's something that we can talk about when Chuck's here. I just, we just, we represent the community as a whole. And, you know, regardless, of course, we're going to get, residents feel one way, residents feel another way. We can't take a position either way and speak on behalf of the residents of Littleton because there's all conflicting opinions and views. We can speak on behalf of the board, you know, if this is a letter that we decide that we want to write, it can come from the board asking for assistance as a board.
Okay.
But not as, not on behalf of the residents of Littleton. I just don't think that's fair to the many people that do support the businesses.
Fair enough. Okay, I, I, I hear you.
That's where I stand on that. And I just, and, and just as far as like reaching out to state officials and things like that, like, I think, you know, as a board, we should, those are decisions usually that are made as a board. Like, I'm going to make a phone call, I'm going to talk to this person or that person. Because it gets a little murky if you're talking as Chair of the Select Board because you're not representing the whole board because we never had a conversation as a board about how we feel about this issue. And we don't all agree on how we feel about this, this situation. So I just, I would just caution against that personally and just, you know, it's, it's a difficult situation, but we've already vested a lot of time and energy in this and I just, I, I think the Planning Board's taking the right approach as far as zoning goes and we can just see, you know, where, where that goes and bring it before the voters of Littleton, but.
Yeah, I, you know, the letter, certainly if, if it just said, what are you doing about the, the potential legal violations? You know, what is, tell us what's being done? Did the Globe expose something? You know, the brighter light we shine on these businesses. Maybe we open it up a little bit more. Let's, let's have the group go in there and, and talk to the business owners and see what it's all about. And, and just see, it might not be the, this dark conspiracy place, you know, I know one of the gentlemen invited us into just, hey, come and, come talk to us and look. And I know that's not going to satisfy people that just don't want a gun dealer in Littleton or, or anything. But the reality is that's illegal not to allow the business.
Yeah, I agree.
So getting around that, we, at least if there's going to be a business in town, it's best to kind of understand what they're doing. And I, you know, and I'm not just going to sit here and condone some of the blogs and I already said that earlier because people are passionate about this on both sides and this is such a hot button topic. So I'm really left with, okay, we send a letter to the DA or the BAG and what do they, they already know what's going on, to Cindy's point. They know exactly what's going on.
Right, but I guess like shining a, as you say, shining a light on it, like, let's, 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 let's get the discussion, let's raise the discussion further and make sure that there's some pressure on people to do.
Yeah, and residents seem to know we are doing something.
Right.
And we've, we've, we've met. We didn't have to hold a public hearing on this. We did because we wanted, we needed to hear what concerns residents. And I can't go anywhere in town without residents letting me know. And I'm not going to tell you that I, it was every resident who had been on the other side. Believe me, I have plenty that are right there with you, the, the people that you spoke to. But the issue is that there, it let me understand that there is a divide or at least a, a threshold for allowing these businesses to be in town. Gun enthusiasts, collectors, hunters. You can go down the list of people that, you know, people that just want to defend their homes. There's a million reasons. And to get hung up on the, the AR-15, I know that was a big issue of these, the automatic weapons. I'm not going to sit here and say you, you can't build an automatic weapon on your own because a person could and it's, it's illegal in our state. But every weapon is meant to kill something. It is. It, that's why it's created, whether it's a handgun, any type of rifle, a shotgun, it's meant to kill something. And understanding that, coming from. And understanding that, coming from that place and realizing that there's a deep rooted founding in this country, as we know on that principle, that we, obviously, I don't have to beat this.
Yeah.
I just think, as far as this letter goes, let's, let's, I'm not quite as opposed to it as Cindy is. I think we need, I, we need to at least let them know, what are you guys doing? Please, this is an issue we have in our town potentially, and if it's not, let me ask that question. If it comes back and the AG finds there's no violation of any law that any one of those, Littleton is still stuck with the same problem. That's why the letter doesn't mean as much to me. We have to address exactly what we're trying to address, and it's to break that large group of weapon dealers in one tight area throughout a community.
Right, and so that's the whole point though Gary, so, okay, so they're not all at the mills, so now they dispersed all over the place, they're still gonna be operating a business, like what's the end game? Like what's our objective?
Well, you can heavily restrict, you know, and that was what the planning board was saying, heavily restrict, you can only have one weapons dealer within a thousand feet of another weapons dealer.
So I get that, but is that gonna stop them from being gun dealers?
No.
No.
So this, it'll be another community.
Yeah, I just, I, I think we can, you know, we should revisit this clearly when Chuck's here.
Yeah, certainly.
And just see, get what his opinions are.
I'm fine with tabling this, I'm fine with changing the language. I mean, I, I'm, I'm really glad we had this conversation. I have not had the same experience and conversations that you have had, clearly.
I would not.
So, so I, it's, you know, yeah, I'm, I, I don't have any problem with not sending it on behalf of the residents. I don't have any problem with changing the language inside to, to more closely focus on what we want to focus on.
My number, number one focus for me in the community, when it comes to something like this, is safety, right? Is period. Now, there, there's definitely a large voice that says just having them in the community creates an unsafe place. They've been here for 20 years, not that number, let's not get hung up on a number, whether it's one selling a handgun or pieces of weapons or whatever. They've been here and we have had no issue with these businesses, besides very, a few times that they reported people trying to buy weapons when they weren't supposed to, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that the safety piece, and that's my greatest concern, is being managed, and that you have to rely on the people doing the inspections from federal, state, and local. And maybe now that there's a light shine in there a little bit more, if there was anything that wasn't being absolute letter to the law, which I would, knowing what someone has to go through to do this, I'd be surprised, but now these people should be correcting any issues, paperwork, every issue that they have.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, that's not gonna correct some of the stuff that's going on in some of the blogs that some of our residents have been dealing with, but, you know, that's a separate issue.
Yeah, okay.
Well, those things that we can control.
But I, I definitely think we, we need to-
Let's, let's get-
-create some type of language that is, is kind of saying, hey, AG, give us, give us something that you're doing. Is there a criminal activity going on? With no comment. That is a cop out, because it'll be the same cop out three months from now, a new AG will come in, and then maybe they'll take it up, right? And maybe that's where we wait, take, I don't know.
Okay.
But I, I just-
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, yeah.
So I have a question, it's probably more for Anthony on this. While the planning board's drafting the bylaw potentially, can we put a moratorium on new businesses coming in, as long as we can?
No. So what, what happens with zoning is, Myron can tell, he should, thanks for hanging around, and I'll use Myron's quote, zoning is forward looking, right?
Yep.
So once the planning board has a draft bylaw, and they have a public hearing, what happens is, there's that delta in time between the planning board's public hearing and town meeting that needs to approve it. So that public hearing actually would put a freeze-
Okay.
-in place, so, in, in that zoning until town meeting has an opportunity to weigh in on that. So by them doing it, and if they do put 500 feet apart, or whatever it is that they come up with in this bylaw, would, would take effect in a, sort of, in, in November.
Okay.
In May?
November. It freezes, when they hear, after the hearing, that regulation, the, the bylaw that the zoning board, the planning board came up with, is kind of freezes that zoning, that proposed zoning. So anybody looking, has to look at that zoning.
Okay.
So, yeah, until town meeting.
And that's what's being done now?
And that's what's being done now.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah.
No, it's good.
Myron, was that- Because I, it's like all of us, I don't, I didn't mark, vacationed at the right time or went on business, I don't know where you were, but it's been two weeks of, you know, people find my emails and my texts and my phone.
Well, I got, I got plenty of them, so.
Yeah, and what you do as a group too, I know, our, our board has received many, and there's, there's definitely enough topic here. We just have to make sure that the citizens are safe. We're doing all, all we can, and we, yeah, keep, keep holding all our businesses accountable in town. Make sure that they're being run legally and appropriately.
Yeah, agreed. All right, let's move on. Thank you for that. Town administrative performance goals and evaluation. I sent around some proposed goals for Anthony's last year evaluation, which I don't know if anyone has had a chance to review, but I want to, at some point, we need to finalize that and submit his, his annual review that we did almost a year ago now, with additional language that I proposed as well.
Can you recirculate that? I don't know.
Yes, I can recirculate. Do you want to wait, again, table this until Chuck is here?
Yeah, yeah, I think Chuck-
Are you looking for comment?
Well, I only, I only came up with four goals, and there should be five. And yes, and comments on my, you know, I put a note on the, on the written review that we, we approved, or that we read out, I don't know that we approved it as a board. All right, public hearing, thank you so much for waiting. Proposed layout of Douglas Street is a new public way in the town of Littleton. Who is leading the charge on this one?
Sure. So Myron's here, that's, yeah, that's it. Just a reminder to everyone, we have a, the board or town, special town meeting is being asked to accept Douglas Street as a public way. Aaron Tuhill is here tonight and can speak to what's being proposed.
Yep, so, good evening, Maureen Tuhill, town planner. Thank you for holding the public hearing for acceptance of Douglas Way. The road construction is substantially complete. There's a little bit of field work outside that must get done between now and, and town meeting. It's, it's very doable, it's just a matter of communicating. Somebody thought it was done, and now it's not done, but it will be done by the, by the time we reach town meeting floor. The as-built plans have been reviewed, comments were made, the as-built plans were updated, and you have the updated version in front of you now. It's the last section of the Durkey NK form to be accepted by the town, and then, so we'll not leave this one section that's, well, it's currently plowed privately, it would be added to the streets that are publicly plowed.
And Stephen has approved it, like signed off on it for plowing and roadwork and so forth?
Yes, Steve's been included in all the discussions, yeah.
So do we need to open a public hearing, take public comment and close the public hearing tonight? All right, Mr. Clerk, it's time to read.
Do we have that?
Do we need to read the announcement for the public hearing, like notice first?
Yes.
Good, the whole thing.
Can you read that?
Can you read that, Gary? Probably my best. The select board will hold a public hearing on October 11th, 2022, at 7:30 PM. Littleton Rubenhorn Library starts from 35 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass, pursuant Master of Law Chapter 82 on the proposed laying out of a new public way described as follows. The way known as Douglas Street from 0-00 to 6-00, the intersection of Cypress Street, as shown on the plan entitled, "The Street Acceptance Plan in Littleton, Massachusetts, Prepared for Douglas, uh, Durkey Farm Builders, Inc." Does that say the first?
One inch equals 20 feet.
Yeah, one inch equals 20 feet, dated 8/8/20, last reviewed 7/27/2021, prepared by Hancock Associates Sheets, AB-12, AB-13, and AB-15. Copies of the plans are on file in the town clerk and the planning board office. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to the select board, town administrator's office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass, 01460, or by email to selectboard@littletonmass.org before noon on Wednesday, October 5th, 2022. Signed, Littleton Select Board, Matthew Nordhaus, Chair.
And we ever received anything, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, okay. Do we need to do anything until we, and then, is there any public comment on this? Nope. Do we need to do anything but close the public hearing? So I'll take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Gary, seconded by Mark this time. Is this a roll call, or do, can we do a regular voice vote?
Re-.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0, public hearing is closed, and now we need to do the motion to accept the public way.
All right, move that the select board, is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion?
No.
Move that select board vote pursuant to Master of Law Chapter 82 to approve the
layout of the private way known as Douglas Street from 0+00 to 6+00, as shown on the plan entitled, "Street Acceptance Plan in Littleton, Massachusetts, Prepared for Durkey Farm Builders, Inc. One inch equals 20 feet, dated 8/20/2020, last revised 9/9/2022, prepared by Hancock Associates Sheet, AB-12, AB-13, and AB-15. Enter, acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, the land rights and easements for drainage, utility, or other purposes in said private way, including the area shown as utility and access easement on Sheet AB-15 of said plan."
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Yay, we have a street.
Through the chair, could I ask what AB stands for?
As-built.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
That would've made me look more intelligent when I read it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Anything else on that one, Mr. Administrator? Are we all set?
No, we can move along.
Okay. All right, recommendation for the road that we just accepted off for town meeting, Article 14. Do we want to, do we want to recommend that the town accept this? Any comments, questions? No?
Yeah, that neighborhood's built.
Okay, so let's accept it. So I'm ready for a motion, I guess.
Move to recommend Article 14 of Number 1, 2022, special town meeting to accept Douglas Street as a public way.
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. All right, article presentations and assignments, everyone's favorite time.
That's right.
Put your votes in now for your favorite articles.
Pick your article.
I'm voting for Chuck for doing all of them.
Totally fair.
Yeah.
So I believe that we typically don't have any representatives for the citizens' petitions. Is that correct?
Correct, that's right.
Um, so I believe, Cindy, you want to take the general bylaw amendments, right?
I'll take that one, sure.
Um, do you want to do the classification, you want to take the classification plan? Mark, do you have any that you feel strongly about?
I'll do the CPC ones.
The CPC, the transfer or the, oh wait.
Eight and, what did it say, eight and nine?
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine, okay. So Mark will do eight and nine, Gary will do 11. I will do-
Gary, do 10?
Uh, you want to do 10, Gary, too?
Yeah, I mean, that's-
I mean, I can do all of the, I can do like one, two-
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do 10 on the one.
I can do one, two, three, four, five.
Should we leave, what, what are we gonna leave for Chuck?
Uh, I don't know if he has any, does he have any sort of investment in any of these? We can give him six and seven.
Six and seven.
I can do 13, because I, Myron explained it to me.
Six and seven would be good for Chuck.
Yeah, those would be good for him.
And then 14 for Chuck, just because.
Six, seven, 14 for Chuck?
Cause he wasn't here.
Just cause he wasn't here, yeah. We'll make it, we'll make him do the Douglas Street. Ryan, do you have those all listed yet, or do you want us to keep going?
So we're gonna give Chuck, uh, six, seven, and 14?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're gonna take 13?
Um, 13, yeah, I'll take 13 and one through five.
Okay, got it.
Actually, do we have someone for six? That's Chuck, okay.
Yep.
Eight, we have, nine, we have-
That covers it.
Okay, great, that was easy. That was way easier than usual.
All right.
The annual's a lot.
We, we always had Joe Knox jumping on the first 10, but, all right. Um, let's see, we did eight, C, eight, seven B is done, okay, eight B, letter of intent to commit 2 million ARPA funds.
Sure, so in your packet, I did a draft letter at the water, the sewer department's request. So what they're trying to do is, they're putting in their loan application, the SRF, through the federal government, and, and that gets processed kind of through DEP.
What is SRF?
State revolving fund.
Okay.
So it's the low interest or no interest loan, usually low, lower than what we normally can get. Sometimes they're forgiven depending on the situation that goes with it.
Yeah.
So the, there's the town authorized a $25 million borrowing article. The water department, sewer department's going for this SRF loan application with the original amount that we were talking about, which is $39 million. So Mass DEP and SRF, they said, you know, you don't have that delta to make up a funding, and so therefore, you gotta show us where the extra money is coming from. So they were looking, something that we had expressed at the select board level, really holding aside $2 million for the sewer project. So when I put this to let, let it together, you know, I, I just wanted them to, it just had to be short and sweet, but their concern is, is when I referenced, it's pays for the town's betterment and any other costs that we have to incur as a user of the system, just like anybody else, and that really was with that $2 million. And they said, listen, we totally understand that, and we agree, that's fine, but if you can take that out and just put that in the body of the email when you send over this letter, you know, we get it, the town's gonna use that. But by, by leaving it in there, they're concerned that the, that that won't be looked at as another $2 million for the project.
Because it would be paying for the town share of the betterment-
Right.
-instead of building the project.
Right, instead of the additional.
I guess, I recall that we, we said 2 million for the sewer and the rest for the senior center?
We never actually, we never voted, it was kind of, the intent was, all right, let's earmark $2 million, then another billion dollars for the senior center, and then we used some money for some equipment during COVID, and then we needed some orchard, the $85,000. So, and even this, you know, you're just setting the intent, right? At some point, you have to take a formal vote to use ARPA funds for that purpose, though. But because we really haven't had anything, we haven't asked you to do that yet.
Is this, but is this intent gonna commit us to, I mean, is this gonna, if we don't commit to this for the, the grant, or for the funding for the sewer, is that gonna screw up the water department's ability to borrow?
It, it could, it could jeopardize the SRF loan. They may have to, you know, what that means, Nick couldn't be here tonight, and certainly he said he'd be happy to come next meeting if the board has a question, it's not super urgent that we do this tonight, but.
And so how much is the SRF loan for?
Approximately $40 million.
And 25 of that is covered already with the borrowing?
No. So the $25 million is what town meeting authorized us to borrow for this project.
Right.
I think we've heard that costs are going up and they don't expect that 25 million to be 25 million.
Oh, so they're doing the 40 in order to bid?
Just to, kind of, just to cover it, not knowing, because we haven't, they haven't gone out to bid yet for this project because we haven't, they haven't received the DEP permit with tells them how much flows that we're going to get gallons per day. So we're kind of in a limbo state waiting for DEP, but we also have to get this SRF loan application submitted.
When do we have to do the loan application?
We have some time, he said. It's, it's, it's important, but we could hold off for another two weeks. And we could have Nick here or Corey here that might be able to speak to it. But I, I think at the very least, taking out that betterment language that I had in there.
Okay. Anticipated connection fees.
Right.
Comments from the Board?
Does FinCom comment on this?
No.
I'm still confused on how it can hurt the grant request. And this is ARPA funding. And it's definitely assisting with massive connection fees that the town's going to incur, right? Infrastructure through the betterment process, so I'm-
Because there's no commitment to above $25 million that the town's, town meeting authorized. So that, that $14 million is the question. Now, I don't think we're going to need $40 million, that would, but we know that it's probably going to be higher than 25 million.
I mean, the $2 million, at the end of the day, I mean, it is, they think it's going to come back and it is going to help with our betterment if we get the full 40 or 39, whatever the, whatever we go out and ask for and say we get it. This $2 million, are they, by taking it out, they're no longer committed to helping us with the betterment?
Well, they don't help us with the betterment, it's-
It's pays for our betterment.
Right. And that's what I should, and that's absolutely what I said, that I wouldn't even go to the Board and recommend doing anything unless we have a firm agreement that this money has to go towards our share of the connection to the sewer.
But, and we do, do we even know how much that's going to be yet?
No, because it's, they haven't gone out to bid.
And we still don't have the DEP flow?
Correct, permits.
I mean, it's a little scary to just say, well, two-thirds of our $3 million windfall is going to this without any discussion about what else it could be do for the town. I understand that we're going to have to spend the money for the sewer one way or another. And so I, I do understand how it makes sense. But with all of the sort of pressure on our finances, it seems like it's, it, it concerns me that we're just doing this without really any kind of what I think is due diligence on what else it could be used for. Maybe that's silly, I don't know. You know what I mean?
Well, guessing our betterment's going to be up there.
Yeah.
Little south of $2 million, so the intent is this would connect us and we would have sewer and no additional cost.
That's the intent, that'd be, as a member of the Select Board, that would definitely be my intent-
Right.
-for this money to be used for.
Absolutely.
So I, I just, that's why I'm uncomfortable just removing it. But, I mean, it's on camera that we expect it to be used for that. So if, we can fight that fight later on, I guess. But right now, if it's going to help us, help the water or help sewer get what they need done, then-
I don't understand why it would. They have $25 million authoring, ORA authorization, right? And we're giving them a $2 million elsewhere. We didn't say that they all of a sudden had 23 million, we gave them 27, right? So I'm, I'm not in favor of taking that article, that language out. Also in the letter, it says 550 King Street, RE 550 King Street and Updates. Why does it say that?
I, I can't see, I can't see the letter.
RE 550 King Street and Sewer District Upgrade Program. This doesn't talk about 550 King Street at all, so why is it-
Right, why is it referencing 550 King Street?
Right. Because 550 King Street is, is the biggest user of the-
They're paying their own share.
Yeah, that can come out, that can come out.
Yeah, exactly.
That regarding can come out. I think it was cut and paste.
Yeah, it's probably, we're just responding to the letter, probably.
Right.
But I didn't understand, I didn't understand your comment about the 23, 27, like-
So they have $25 million in ORA authorization. We're telling them, we're committing $2 million more. We're not telling them, we're taking $2 million from their 25.
Yeah.
So this is giving them effectively 27, not 23.
But they need, but they need 39.
Well, we don't know, right?
They don't know what they need, but we're not coming up with the difference anyway, right? We're, we're giving them more beyond the 25, not to whatever their potential cap is, right?
Yeah.
I'm not in favor of taking that language out.
I mean, with a memorandum of understanding, maybe after the fact, I would.
Just to make sure.
I don't know.
I wouldn't, yeah, I would get, I don't like that we anticipate these funds will cover the town's share. I would say it is our understanding that these funds-
Well, either with that, even with that language, if we, we take that up, that paragraph in itself, that sentence, they, they'd like it not to be in the letter.
So maybe we do need-
Oh, wait, Kim, just one second. So they want the "we anticipate these funds" sentence to come out?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I, I'm not agreeing to that coming out.
I think we need to talk to the Commissioners about it.
Yeah, because otherwise, you know, Mark just brought up a good point. I'm like, so we're going to take $2 million of ARPA funds at a time when we certainly can use that money elsewhere? We've already committed $25 million to the project, now we're committing basically 27 million. And we have no guarantee that that's going to help defer the betterment costs for the town specifically, but we're using taxpayer money. Yeah, so I, yeah, I'm not, I don't agree with that, taking that language out at all. So.
I guess we need to discuss it with the Commissioners.
We can request somebody be here at the next meeting.
But this is going to go to Pratt.
What's going to go to Pratt? No, we have time.
And, and in this packet too, Anthony, it's, there's an email from Corey that says, "If not, could you write a letter indicating the Select Board's intention to provide this dollar amount for the project by the end of this week so I can provide it to the DEP per my previous email to you and Sal?" Why is Sal involved in the email?
So if you recall, Sal had said all along that, you know, he obviously needs sewer to do the work. And he said, regardless if you got a MassWorx grant or not, he'll commit, he'll cover that $6 million. I think that was the money that was always talked about, trying to get a MassWorx originally for $6 million. So basically Sal's saying, listen, if you, we don't get the MassWorx grant, I'll put in the $6 million.
For sewer.
So that would be, so now we have 25 and the two, thank you, and the six.
So 31.
Now we're six short still, right?
So, so it's 25 plus that $6 million that Sal said he would commit if we got no MassWorx grant. That's 31, plus our two is 33, plus the Water Department's commitment for replacing water pipes while doing some of the sewer projects. There's some dollar amount that they identified as part of that project that they, they're going to put.
So we're creeping up on 39 at this point?
Right, we're getting to that, getting to that level.
Okay. I would, it, it feels a little, a little vague to me, I guess. I'd like to know, I'd like to understand fully what's going on and, you know, where the money is being allocated and what specifically we need to commit to and why.
None of the Commissioners could be here.
They couldn't tonight.
Ivan was going to be the representative, but he got called away at work last minute this afternoon. I got a late call from Nick, so-
Well, then let's, let's wait until next week.
He's digging on-
He has too much money, not-
I, I agree, yeah, I think it is too much.
Yeah, it needs to be specific.
Yeah, and I told that to Nick, so he, he said, if we don't do it today, it'll be the 24th, and he said, fine. And so we'll table that for the 24th?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Budget calendar?
Budget calendar, can you pop it up or let me pop it up? Oh, yeah, I can't see that.
Is this, has this-
I got it over here.
Did this change from the-
No, I just, you know, we wanted to just, you know, Alicia's covering FinCom tonight. We just wanted to go through where we stand in the budget calendar and just let you know. So in October, all the required budget documents, including capital plans, be submitted to the Finance Director. We, she, her deadline was last Friday. We have most, but not all of the departments, which is not uncommon, there's vacations and et cetera that go on. So we'll, the chase is on for a couple of the other departments. And then during, what we're expecting is the next, we're, we're shooting really for the next meeting to just kind of give the Select Board a, and perhaps should do the same thing for FinCom, just an overview where we see, like a financial forecast, just before we start really getting into the budget. So we're shooting for that for the 24th.
Okay, and this has been approved by a Finance Committee as well? They're being presented this tonight or across the street, across the parking lot?
This is just an update. There's nothing to, we're not looking for anything, we're just kind of providing an update where we stand.
So the next, the next time that we're deeply involved is going to be when they, she, when she submits the initial budget document to us?
Right, in December.
In December.
And then the school, that's a big one.
Okay.
Right, the school's going to be later.
Thank you. And the last item on the agenda is the mid-
Before we move on, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
I still think we should either, either Finance Committee or Finance Committee and the Select Board should have another sit down with all the departments like we did in May and have them present, not just their requests at a high level, right? We don't have to go through, you know, dollars and cents on everything, but just like we did before we set our goals. Because now we're basically setting the financial goals for the following year. And this is, I don't want it to be like a Super Saturday.
You say like a roundtable like you just-
A roundtable like we did before.
Or if you were meeting that you held, actually.
But so, so that's in January, right?
No, I'm-
The one we already did?
Well, I want to have a roundtable like we did before with all the departments where they can come in and say, this is what I presented, you know, five minutes each.
So what, what we had talked about is Alicia and I would give us, after we looked at the budgets, and we'd give you a plan with our recommendations, as well as what the, all the asks are. And I think there can be an opportunity for members to speak with departments. If you want before January, that's fine. But I think, you know, your ask is going to be way up here. And it's something that I can tell you right now, we can't afford. So a lot of difficult decisions, especially if we're going to end up having a town department to deal with the orchard, right? That's just, are going to be a budget buster, you know, because we're probably looking at guesstimate $350,000. That's huge. So I'm not sure having them in to hear the high level without us having an opportunity to really talk to them about some of what their asks are and seeing if maybe some of them could be held off depending on the urgency.
I, I agree that the, having them filtered at some point is a good thing, but I'd like to hear them unfiltered first, right? I would really love to sit down with all the departments at once and have them all come out and say, in one room where everyone's there and say, this is what I want, this is what I need, so on and so forth. And then they can all hear each other and we can all hear them. And then you can go through and do the work to say, well, we can't afford all of these and, you know, whittle it down.
Right.
But I'd really love to hear it unfiltered before we hear the whittled down version.
Right, and I, so I agree with that to some extent, Mark. So what we did with this whole process, the intent of the roundtable meeting that we have with the Budget Departments, that meeting was prior to the Select Board goal-setting process. So what was supposed to happen was, and we kind of skipped a step because we had that meeting with all the department heads, we as a board never had a subsequent meeting where we talked about that meeting. And I know Diane Dickerson took minutes from that meeting, I took a bunch of minutes, but I, you know, I, I think we did get a summary of what was discussed in that meeting. But then we as a board never really took a look at that, had a talk about it, and then specifically incorporated some of those, you know, requests or asks, however you want to designate them, into our goal-setting process. Because that was what the whole intent was. And then from there, you know, we then have our goals, we know our goals align with the town departments. And then we proceed with the budget process that way. Because it makes it a lot easier when you're looking at like the high-level asks, if that's what you want to call them, to see what do, what does align with some goals that, that we as a board have. So I think, you know, the process is a little bit better, but we kind of missed a step. But I do agree with you is, I don't want to get a whittled down version. Like I want to see exactly what was presented.
Well, I, I don't think FinCom needs to see that. I know we talked about, but FinCom just telling us with the, with the Finance Team, here's how much money we have. Like, I know in the last several years, we've been really involved, the FinCom was really involved with making a decision on whether or not we need a police officer. They were part of the discussion. It's really not their charge and it's not fair to them. Because they're not a political, they're not a political board. They need to talk, the money, do we have the money to do it? I would, I don't know, where do-
Right, but not whether or not we fund it. And, you know, and as far as that whole roundtable meeting we had, it would be great to have invite FinCom. I think at this stage in the process, we can't repeat that whole exercise. I think for next year, the Board definitely should invite FinCom to be part of that discussion. I think that would be great. But just as far as for this year, I don't think we can revisit that again. If we're, if Anthony and Alicia are already gathering all the information from the department heads, we definitely can see the high-level, big picture. And then on top of that, see Anthony and Alicia's recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's the, I would, I would still like to know, here's how much money we have to spend on, I don't know, let's say capital and operations, whatever. And then it gets presented to FinCom. FinCom sits with Anthony and Alicia, they, and from that, they create the recommendations like they're going to do. Or their option A, B, or C, whatever, however represented. And then we can make those tough decisions if we maybe don't fully agree with it and what those ramifications are.
Right.
But I think letting the Finance Team and Alicia and Anthony come up with their best recommendations probably saves us a lot of work.
Is that what you mean, Mark?
Well, I'm, let's just say-
But you're still going to get to see everything. You're still going to see what their ask was and, and what they were, you know, it'll all be in that budget document that we prepared. So that we know, you're not just going to get the whittled down, this is what we think.
That's the important thing.
Right.
If somebody asks for something and you and Alicia said, that's not going to, we're not going to recommend it because we really need to spend it on this.
You need to know what it is.
We need to know that they asked.
Right, and you need to know what it is.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that what you were after?
I want to, yeah, if the fire department says they need 20 new officers and police needs 50, I'd really like to know that they asked for that and not that we, well, we can only afford three.
Right.
Right, no, no, that information you absolutely get.
I agree with you on that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. So, thank you for the update. Anything else on that? Minutes? I read through them, I approve all three of them. Anyone have comments or changes? No? All right, I'll take a motion. Mark, do you have any?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move that the Select Board vote to approve the following meeting minutes. September 12th, 2022, September 26th, 2022, September 28th, 2022. Contingent on the inclusion of listing of the meeting exhibits.
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Cindy. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you all, Littleton. We'll be back on October 24th.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, I thought I'd say goodbye first. Jeez, you guys, how eager are you to get out of here? Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Gary, seconded by Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Gavel. Good night, Littleton, thank you.